This is the aquifer system map for the island of Hawaii. There's a number of them, and this is how we manage and split up the pie, so to speak, of all the water we think is available from a groundwater perspective. And we're only talking about this red area today. And so, just a little history, this is, like I said, it's been going on for over a year. September 13th, 2013, last year, the National Park Service submitted this petition requesting that that area be designated as a groundwater management area. What does that mean? Well, in groundwater management areas, it requires additional regulation. There is regulation right now, but the additional regulation is that water use has to be approved in most cases, groundwater use, through groundwater use permits. And I'll get a little bit more into that later. Okay, the designation process itself, this is a little bit of a highlight because up until this point, this is the process, how we've been describing it over the past year. There's actually been slight modifications to this as we've been discussing this internally. And where we are today in this process is actually right here, this point, this long rectangle. The commission decides whether to continue the designation process or not. Okay, if you can see from the top down, the initiation can happen by the chair, or it happened by written petition by the National Park. Once we get a petition, we consult with the county, so all the major council, mayor, Department of Water Supplies, and if need be, investigations are made. Now, the commission is supposed to get to this point normally in 60 days, okay? Or if there's a lot of investigations, a lot of questions, a lot of issues, they can choose to extend it, okay? And what happened last year in October is that the commission decided to extend it after reading the petition to, here we are today, December 2014. So this is where we're at, okay? Now, the change really is in where do we go from here? Because what we were presenting before was that, once the commission makes a decision today, there would be 90 days for the commission to come out a final decision on whether to designate or not. That has changed. So this next chart basically shows there's a gap here in the timeline. Okay, I'll just toggle up between the two. Slight differences too is that there are really two findings of fact, there's a final one, we're only at the preliminary one today, okay? And that's to help with this decision, whether we continue. This gap, okay, is to allow for more time between the public hearing and also to allow if there's, you know, more investigations because we've gotten a ton of testimony over the past two weeks. And we've been, that's part of your submittal and indexed and so forth. A lot of it's on the website as well for everyone in the public to review it at their desire. It's when that final findings of fact is made and we come back for another meeting and make the recommendation what to do, then the commission has 90 days to make a final decision. So, in short, there's a little bit more breathing room, it's not as imminent as we were describing earlier. So that's the difference, the main difference. Yeah, so just wanted to clarify that. Okay, so, the area we're talking about is this, the green area is the park. I think everyone local here is familiar with that. Those are the boundaries. This is the aquifer boundaries of the Kauahe'a Aquifer System area. You may notice that the park extends into the ocean, and that's some of the issues that they've had and talked about in their petition. Now, this is from the petition, and this kind of encapsulates, I think, what the concern is. The park again, this green area, surrounded by all this planned development, and how that may impact the park in terms of groundwater use. You can see the wells up here in the, this is a high level and there's wells nearby in the basel area. They're concerned about the impacts to the park and what pumpage would do to the quality of the water. So, the history, for those who are new here, this isn't something new and just started a year ago, it's actually been going on since about 2007. There's been a lot of working groups, an effort, one initiated by the National Park back in 2007, followed by the roundtable, which was really spearheaded. I believe Milton, you were still in charge at the time, Commissioner Pavel was in charge at the time. And then there's also professionals who, we talked about things back in 2008 as far as sustainable yields, because the commission staff itself, through the Water Resource Protection Plan, sets sustainable yields. So there's a lot of discussions since then. So again, it's nothing new. The outcome of all these discussions were actually three major things. There have been increased monitoring, there's also been ongoing studies, and also, because of this petition, more of a review of the extensive completed studies to date. The reason for the extension was to get at this part, the current ongoing studies. There's an update in the wings from us, the commission staff, for the Water Resource Protection Plan update, it's supposed to be happening, it was supposed to happen this year, but it looks like it's going to be 2015. There were evapotranspiration studies done by UH, updated recharge studies that were currently ongoing. We also, as staff, to the commission, we contracted a review of water use and water levels and try to identify trends. I'll get into that a little bit later. And then, the USGS, we contracted, we have to look at an isotope study to try define, well, how's the water moving around from the high level in the basel? A little bit more on that later. And there's also a 3D numerical model that's been ongoing, really since, I believe it's 1999, with the USGS as well. And the petition talks a little bit about that too. So, with that, when a petition comes in, there are eight criteria that the commission shall consider, okay? They're not limited, the commission is not limited to these, but it's a minimum, and you should consider. It doesn't mean an automatic designation if one is met, or no designation if nothing is met, it's just something that they, the commission must consider. The major one is the 90% of sustainable yield, whether existing and, there's this term, authorized planned use, but we're going to use projected future use in this analysis here, to get at this 90%, this first. The next one is actual water quality degradation as determined by the Department of Health. Unfortunately, we don't have a director right now in the transition to the new administration, but response from them is forthcoming. Thirdly, whether diminishing, whether there's excessive declining water levels. I'll get into that a little bit later. It's something that we found out may be a concern. Fourth, whether that the rate, time, spatial patterns of the pumping is basically endangering the optimum development of the aquifer. And the risk being encroachment of saltwater, things will be salting up, and then we can't drink saltwater, yes. Fifth, actually, if chlorine contents in the wells are increasing to levels which is reducing the utility under existing uses. If there's excessive preventable wastes occurring. If there are serious disputes respecting use of groundwater, and lastly, if there are any federal, state, or county approvals which would result in the previous seven. So those are the eight criteria that the commission needs to consider. In the findings of fact, we briefly kind of touched upon it, but at this particular point, we're not making any final merits decision on all these criteria. We're just presenting facts today that we found over the past year. The petition itself, if you read through it and trying to digest it in the context of those eight criteria, what we felt and have presented over the past years, there are actually five of the eight criteria that the commission shall consider that are raised, and one is the sustainable yield. And it's, it's not adequate to address traditional and customary rights, whatever impacts of reduced discharge to ankyline ponds in the ocean because of pumping, that's a concern. And then the projected water demands of the future are going to exceed sustainable yield, that would be the 90% criteria again. And then rising sea level, and I believe also climate change is in there as well, declining rainfall is going to impact the sustainable yield. So, basically, that first criteria, about 90%, we're going to hit, we're going to exceed that, we're going to meet that. Saltwater encroachment, this is in the Kahului area, specifically at the shaft, I'll get into that a little bit later. Waste is occurring, the use in Kona is two and a half times higher than other areas of the Big Island. Serious disputes about what is the future pumping, the cumulative effects on the national park resources. And actually, conceptual models of what's going on underground in the aquifer, as part of the 3D model thing going on. And lastly, this is kind of a repeat, potential projects, that's that federal government state, that kind of approval which may result in the above. So that's kind of a summary of the petition from staff's perspective, and we're still sticking to that. And I'm going to go through these, actually, as part of the submittal itself, as follows, just so we can see some facts here. Okay, this is actually a little bit new, simply because this area is the aquifer system again. The sustainable yield currently is 38 million gallons per day. However, based upon the new recharge estimates, new studies, and so forth, the best estimates we have seem to indicate that the sustainable yield could go up to as high as 80 million gallons per day, okay? That's even with climate change, okay? That's what the studies have said, it's just, you know, don't shoot the messenger, that's what these studies say. That's our best estimate, even with the last 30 years and future climate change scenarios. Well, that sustainable yield is a fraction of these recharge studies, which, the range there, these numbers come from these numbers, actually. There's 87 to 183 million gallons per day which is getting into the ground, just from precipitation over this area. That's not counting whatever flow is coming from other adjacent aquifer systems. This is how we account for things across the board. So we're just looking in this area, that's the water that we think is coming in. Given that, and the concerns of the petition, when you're looking at the coastal discharge, there's, that would translate to a range which is basically subtracting sustainable yield, if you use it, use or pump up to these numbers, a range of 49 to 145 million gallons per day. So you can see these numbers exceed, you know, the minimum exceeds the minimum here, the maximum far exceeds the maximum here. So what we're trying to point out here is that, even if you pump all the way up to sustainable yield, there's going to be significant coastal discharge that continues, okay? That's the first point. Now, as part of our trend analysis report we have with a consultant, and our continued efforts at getting water use information, water level information, chlorine information from all the users, there's 129 total wells in this aquifer system area, 39 are pumping. This graph is, I think, this is new for everyone because I think before, when we first started, we only had up into the mid 80s. We've kind of, we've added additional pumpage, but historically, we've gotten a better picture from way back when. That's important, because that produces trends. Currently, it's about 39%, if you take the maximum average pumpage of about 15 million gallons per day. So it's a little difficult to see, but it's this green line that averages out on a 12-month moving average. So you're always getting a full hydrologic year involved, it's evening out the dry times of the year and the wet times of the year. And the highest we had, just at the end of last year, was 15 million gallons per day. Out of 38 is the sustainable yield, this red line, that's 39%. If you look here, actually, the pumpage began all the way back in 1960. And if you look at the trend of how things have gone from where it was very low, this is about the past 44 years, since 1971, the trend is about 341,000 gallons per year increase. That's a pretty consistent trend there. I'm sure some of you are trying to do the math in your head, if you extrapolate this out, when do we hit this? Well, that would take about 67 years if we followed this trend. So, again, that's just information, doesn't mean it's going to happen, but if it follows this trend, that's how long it would take to reach sustainable yield. Okay, that 15 is broken down into two components. These green sources in the aquifer system area, the basel, it's a very thin lens, it's brackish, but in some areas, it's, has been historically good enough to drink, and particularly at the Kahului Shaft, although they have some salinity problems. But what I want to point out here is, these circles show the relative quantities that are being pumped from all the pumping sources, those 39 sources. You can't see the real small ones, but the big one is this Kahului Shaft, okay? And that's the one that happens to be having some salinity problems, and it's in the southern portion of the aquifer. The high level are these six sources, okay? The total from the high level right now is six out of the 15. The total out of the basel is nine. So the basel is still supplying a significant amount of demand, both portable and non-portable. So that's what the status is today. In the petition, and this is from the Water Use and Development Plan, well, let me take a step back. Having said this, I think we've established what the spatial distribution and the actual quantity of existing uses. So what is, what's going to happen in the future? Takes you to the next chart, which is, what's your crystal ball, what's going to happen in the future? The sustainable yield is this red line here, we've highlighted that. And all these bar graphs are estimates based on population growth out to 2025, county zoning, full buildout, and then county general plan, full buildout, using all what's in the county's general plan. And you can see it exceeds it, okay? The dark blue is ag, and the hatched is urban, okay? Now, whether or not these actually come to fruition, that's something the commission has to consider and decide whether that's probable, I guess. But we do know that, if you were to use the worst possible case, the general plan full buildout, who knows when that would happen? That would be 175 million gallons per day, okay? And that would serve a million people, just to, you know, get an idea, you think you'd have as many people, I guess, as on the island of Oahu, living just in this aquifer system area? That's, you know, people can have their opinions on that. Okay? This, okay, as part of the projected demands, came actually from the county in our consultation as part of the process, what do you guys think? And this was presented at the November 19th meeting that we had on Oahu, to give the county extra time to explain what they felt were the projected demands. And what they said was, they felt authorized planned use was more related to commitments which have been made. And this is similar to what happened in the Eau designation on the island of Maui, where there was a listing of, what are these commitments, what are these agreements? And they've, based on that, they were saying that they have commitments that will bring the future pumpage up to about 20 million gallons per day, okay? This green line, okay? Sustainable yield is still up here, in the red. They also provided population growth extrapolations to try generate on a per capita basis what the demand might be too. So they have a range. Both seem to indicate by the year 2030 is about the time, you know, we're going to hit 20, at least, you know, from population trends, okay? That's a piece of information that staff has used. From testimony in our investigations, there's been additional quantities that I want to highlight here for you. And first is the Department of Hawaiian Home Lines, which is a little bit different character in terms of zoning and so forth. And their projected full buildout, and by the way, there's, part of the testimony that came in recently was a request for reservation. That turns out to be about three and a half million gallons per day, so what we're saying is, add that. There may be some double counting in commitments here, and there actually is, but let's take the worst-case scenario. So that's three and a half million gallons per day. Now, the State Water Projects Plan, which is part of the Hawaii Water Plan, and this is from 2003, listed projects that were going to tally up to about five million gallons per day. So if you take that and add it to what the county has as far as commitments, and these additional demands from these two entities, yeah, in the Kauahe'a Aquifer System, we're going to come up to about 28, 28 and a half million gallons per day by the year 2030. Now, this box, so to speak, this between 23 and 28, because we really don't know when these are, this is full buildout. This may happen even further into the future beyond 2030, but we're going to be conservative, say, it's all, everyone's going to have all the money they need, they're going to develop right away, get all their approvals. So, what we've done in the findings, okay, the total demand here is on the, is on the bottom. That box, that 23 to 28, is exemplified right here, this one right here. This is the same as that, okay? This is the total aquifer, and so, this is what we've envisioned the trends will be out into the 2030 time period, okay? These are the basel wells. What the county is planning, what, because of the salinity problems we're having at Kahului Shaft, it's not really increasing the pumpage beyond this. Actually, we should show this, maybe a decreasing line. It's one of the things, again, this is a preliminary findings, this may be decreasing, I think it will be, because they're going to be shifting the pumpage from the basel aquifer to the high level. And you can see the high level has been, again, you know, average of six as opposed to nine. And this is where it's headed for the high level. But of course, it's important where these high-level wells are, if they're all right above the park, not as good as if they're spread out amongst the entire high-level aquifer area. Now, part of the sustainable, part of the petition and the concern is, well, that issue itself, where these wells are located, if it's all concentrated above the park, it's going to impact them. Part of the ongoing studies that we've completed because of this extension has been, well, how much of that high level is going to get down into the basel area? This is from some, this particular is from Don Thomas, he drew this up, but he was drawing the flow lines, and I think this, we, in conjunction with the Department of Health and their SWAP model, we had been in discussions with them to, generally, I think most hydrologists would agree, these flow lines are pretty safe to say, that's, that's how the water is flowing in this area. Given that, that's a general, this is a general trend, okay? Now, what I'm going to do is, the map's going to be reoriented slightly, and that general trend is in this direction, okay? Now, you have two areas here which are above the park, the park is down here, okay? This is, this blue line depicts the basel portion, this red line depicts the high-level portion of the water that is falling directly above these areas and then flowing Makai to the ocean. Okay, now, these isotope studies helped us to come up with some numbers, okay? Preliminary again. This subset of the entire aquifer area, we did our analysis on the staff level using the recharge of the USGS. What we came up with is, the local recharge, that's just the water falling above here, in the high level is about 47 million gallons per day, and the local recharge above the basel is about eight million gallons per day. It's all out wetter, you can just look at this, it's green up here and lava field down here, so, makes sense. Now, the isotope studies, looking at the composition of the water, and that was explained that these site investigations back in September, and further from staff in the investigations, came up with, 30% of the total Q, that's the quantity of water in this basel area, is from this eight, okay? If you think about that a little bit. 30% of the total amount of water in this bathtub, okay, is about eight million gallons per day, local precipitation. Well then, if you have these two numbers, what you can figure out is that then the total Q, yeah, eight is basically one-third of the total, which is 26, okay? Now, having that in mind, the isotope studies, both from FACRAL and the USGS, came up, sorry, it's a little bit hard to see, the isotope study said 50% of the local recharge from the high level is part of this total Q, is part of what's going into this bathtub. So this 50%, okay, relates to this 26%, okay? That's the total Q in here, 50, oh, sorry, 50% of that, okay, is coming from the high level, okay? What that means, yeah, there it is, that's the portion that's overflowing. The overflow is about 13 million gallons per day. So 13 out of 47 million gallons per day is 28%. So roughly a quarter of what you pump up here is going to decrease down in this area. So, the issue was, before, all of it, 100% of what you pump is going to impact down by the coast. Or zero, because there's evidence of fresh water going below in this area due to a couple deep monitor wells which we've heard before, that are going through the saltwater and finding fresh water under pressure deep below the basel aquifer. So it's neither extreme, it's neither zero, it's neither 100%. What the isotope studies seem to indicate is about a quarter of the high-level water that you pump is going to decrease to the local area here at the park. Okay, so...
Is it a quarter of what you pump or quarter of the total recharge? Repeat the question, please.
Um, a total, well, it's a total of the recharge, but...
The recharge?
Right, but...
Which is much more than a sustainable yield.
Yes.
Can you repeat the question for the audience?
Okay, the question was, this 28%, is it, is this of the recharge or the pumpage? Okay, well, it is, it is 13, 28% of the recharge.
Recharge.
Right. But that means, if you're pumping, you're pumping that recharge. So, if you have one of that recharge, then a quarter of it is going to the basel, or, excuse me, let me take it back. If you pump, yeah, one quarter of that recharge would have gone to the basel. The other three-fourths is going somewhere else. Yeah, that's what it means. So yeah, it is pumpage, it is pumpage as well. It's both, it's both recharge and pumpage.
Yeah, it's pumpage, but the total recharge is much, much greater than the sustainable yield, so...
Oh, yes.
You have a whole lot more coming down.
Oh, yes, yeah. Yeah. Okay, so that's what I wanted to describe, in terms of the issues surrounding the interaction between the high level and the basel. What I'm going to do here is switch to, this is the findings of fact itself. Thank you. Now, that, that one quarter or 28% of the local recharge that's going in, actually helps, it's kind of makes sense of what we're finding as well. This is a...
You guys get all of your answers, what do you guys think for all of these? I like, you know, you guys give my thing for all of these.
Ebo, I'm going to ask you to have some respect, let him get through the presentation, okay? Because the commission members need this information in order to deliberate and make a decision. If you keep interrupting, we're not going to get to that point. Okay, so I'm just asking for your patience.
Thank you, you better think about us too, yeah, because we come from far places, and I am homeless too, yeah.
Well, hold on, let us get through this, okay, Ebo?
Thanks for your patience.
You guys, you take down my house.
Okay.
There's a lot of water.
Okay.
Remember that.
So, the quarter amount of water that's getting into the basel actually kind of makes sense, given some of the other information that we found, both from finding perched aquifers, we've found these things over the courses of year, over the years. We have a video camera too that goes down, we've been going down a lot of the wells and finding perched water that's coming into a number of the wells in the high level. And that's kind of rearranged our thinking about that 100% going into the aquifer, or 0% going into the basel aquifer. And it's, it's really a combination, and that's what this presents, is the lava flows coming down, and what's falling above, some of it's being short-circuited directly into the basel, a lot of it may be getting under. And that's what we find with these deep monitor wells, a lot of fresh water deep. So that makes sense. The one and new finding as a result of these investigations, if I can get there, and it's a concern, and it speaks to, that's some of the deep monitor well data. You saw that, I updated that, just bear with me. Here's the water levels here. Okay, it's a little bit difficult to see at this scale, but there's a number of wells that we've been monitoring as terms of water levels. One of the criteria is those excessive decline... One of the criteria is those excessive declining water levels, and there's graphs attached. What I'm gonna show here is actually, uh, the trends, okay? This wasn't really brought up in much detail on the petition, but as part of the investigation, it's a concern that we're raising as staff to you to consider. Um, this first chart here is the rainfall over the past, um, well, it's been quite a, quite a number of, of years. But since the, uh, I believe it's the fifties, we've had a declining trend, okay? Now, these, these water levels are at all those selected sites we have, and what you'll see is that there's been a decline here, okay, at all these high levels over the past twenty-five years. Um, we're only looking at this portion of the rainfall though, okay? So what we're seeing here is also a result of what's been happening much further back in time, rainfall has declined. Keep in mind though, the recharge numbers that we have have already considered this decline, okay, so they've been worked into those numbers. Um, but what we're seeing here is these declining water levels here at, uh, Hualali Deep Well, this is another one, um, another one, seventeen percent, eight percent, not much data there, six percent here, ten percent twenty-five years, nine percent in twenty-five years. If you take this, if you look at this as a whole, okay, water levels are declining, probably because of the decline in rainfall. However, because we've been finding this, these perched aquifers and water flowing into the wells, all of which in the high level were drilled before we had the Hawaii well construction standards, which were developed in nineteen ninety-seven, which prevent you from having these interconnected, um, issues. Um, there could be some, um, some wastage of sort, you know, basically you're short-circuiting. Uh, the worst-case scenario is if you have, or Artesian, it's coming up from deep freshwater, it's coming up, and then it's getting into, uh, it's getting salt, into the salty, uh, basal lands, okay? And, um, uh, the state itself is probably guilty of that, more than any, anyone else in the Keopu Deep Monitor Well, okay? Because we've discovered the deep freshwater, once that confined layer was penetrated, and this is just open hole now, the water levels rose twenty feet, if you case that thing, it may rise even higher. But all that water that's coming up, which is for, for, um, um, pretty fresh, and it's probably connected to the high level, is coming out and going into the saltwater portions beneath the basal and the basal itself. So, just from that monitor well alone, there's problems. But these high-level wells are showing things too, and it's part of that, maybe part of the construction, we're not sure, that's where we're thinking, there needs to be more investigation about this. But we think we could handle this, um, through the well construction, um, and, uh, pump installation tools and permitting that the commission already has in place here and throughout the rest of the state. So, and just to give one idea too, if you look at these numbers, we're talking about ten to twenty percent in twenty-five years. That means we got time, we probably have one or two centuries before these water levels go all the way down, so we have time to, um, see if this is just rainfall. And this is, of course, is assuming the rainfall stays low, we don't go in a wetter period, which the climate scenarios suggest it will happen, it'll get, it'll get wet in a corner. Question?
Decreases in direct correlation to the decrease in rainfall? Is it a one-to-one ratio?
Um, yeah, we haven't, we haven't done that analysis, if it's a one-to-one regression analysis and see what the relationships are, but just looking at it, there is some, some relationship, whether it's hundred percent or something less.
The audience can't hear, so if you could just repeat the question real quick.
Yeah, the question was, is there a direct correlation between, um, the decrease in rainfall in these water levels? Uh, well, obviously, it does have some correlation. How much of that is from rainfall, and how much of that is from, uh, this interconnecting of aquifers, we don't know, we can't quantify right now without further investigation.
Roy, can you go back to the, you want me to talk?
Okay, sorry. Good idea.
For the benefit of the public, so you can hear my question, um, can you go back to that slide, Roy, um, with authorized plan use or future use?
Oh, yeah, sure. This one?
No, um, the other projection that you had, uh, where you said a million people living in...
Oh, yeah, 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 okay. That one?
There we go.
Yeah, design it.
Okay.
Okay, so, just so I'm clear in understanding this, so that bar graph on the right-hand side, full plan and build-out, so although you, I mean, a million people in Keo Aquifer, it doesn't look like it's gonna happen anytime soon, that's in a plan for a million people to be...
According to their, yeah, their general...
According to an approved plan.
Uh, the general plan, yeah.
Got it.
Right, could you also clarify that it's not authorized? I mean, you can repeat the question.
Okay, okay. Um, that it's not authorized. Um, I guess that, that is the question, and one that has to be grappled with, with the commission, because the authorized plan use has been dealt with in different ways. And we actually have another, um, we have other thoughts about that, um, and if I may, just a little bit get into there to help answer the question. Uh, the community development plan is another portion of the, you know, authorized planning, so it's just not the general plan. And part of community development plans, at least in the past, at the time when the code was passed, on Oahu anyway, um, they identified projects, okay? Now, they've moved away from that identified projects, which you can quantify amounts, and gotten to more, uh, general, general holistic ideas. I think in Keo is those, uh, TOD, I think, if you recall, the traffic-oriented development areas, kinda hard to glean out numbers from just those kinds of concepts, as opposed to individual projects. So, again, like in the EAL, uh, situation, and on Lanai, in those designation, projects were listed, so you could come up with these numbers that were more probable. And, um, I think the county tried to do that, and we've added to that from other pieces of information to get this range of what we think is probably twenty-three to twenty-eight, which is, um, uh, more, I guess, authorized. But again, it's up to the commission to decide what they think is, is... So there's been a change in the past from project by project to more general things. I think it's causing some problems with getting at these numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, all right, um, let's see. Getting into a few things in the submittal itself, um, I think we've touched upon, um, most issues with the sustainable yield. Uh, we've looked at, uh, the excessive waste, we talked about the well portion, the Hawaii Department of Water Supply, um, and their portion, and what they have reported as, as terms of customers is identified. Question?
Yeah, I have a, a question regarding, regarding waste. Is, uh, uh, re, unused reclaimable water, uh, considered waste? I know there was some discussion about that at the Water Reuse Conference a few weeks ago.
Well, we were discussing it way too long.
Uh, is unused wastewater considered waste? Well, I don't think we've ever come up with that as a definitive statement, at least no commission has, has, uh, come up with that position. Um, it's water that could be reused, it's a resource, but we're only talking about the natural groundwater itself. Um, and again, part of these, and if I may add to that, even groundwater that's used, we're, we're talking about it in this situation as if it's a hundred percent consumed, it's all going out the pipe. Now, and that would be the wastewater, you say, hey, that's a, that's, that's a waste, it's all going out the pipe into the ocean. Well, a lot of this is actually being used through irrigation, it's going to cesspools and so forth, so a lot of that water is going back into the ground. So what we're talking about in uses here are conservative, they're conservative, we're saying, eh, it's all disappearing, when in reality, it's not. And that has implications on the salinity problems, um, or issues rather, that the park is concerned about. Okay? All right, so, well, and let me take a step back, the salinity issue, since we're talking about that, is really only defined, again, in the Kahului area, and they're trying to get off the shaft. I think you saw that at the site investigation, they're gonna be concentrating, uh, moving to the high level, although, um, let's see, if I can show it again, that map. What we're trying to say is, you need to spread out that high level to the south, okay, and I don't... Question?
Yeah, I, I... Another question regarding the, um, uh, switch over from, uh, the, the Palu Shaft, which are very salty, to the high level. Um, I understand the concept of trying to spread out the pumping and how essential that is. The, uh, the high-level wells, a lot, a lot of the high-level wells that we, that we've been told about are, uh, being, uh, drilled and, um, put into production by private, uh, developers, specifically to add new source for, uh, projects that are coming online in the future. There's, I'm wondering how that works with Board of Water Supply, which has an imperative to spread out the pumping using high-level wells to, uh, s- spread out and replace the, uh, basal water from Kahului, Kahului Shaft and other sources that are salting up. How that works when the new water that's being, uh, created, is not being created by Board of Water Supply, but by private entities who are doing it, uh, and, you know, since they're creating it, have a right to do it, uh, for their own projects. It seems to create a bit of a, a dichotomy, so, will that water be available for the existing users whose older basal sources are salting up? Or will they have to maintain on the salted-up basal sources while the new development gets the, uh, high-level, uh, water being created by private developers?
Okay. Um, well, that, that's an interesting question, and probably better answered by the county, but if I may, the two, the two tools I think that the county has, uh, in their toolkit, yeah, to control how that water is developed is, one, of course, whatever agreements they have and how it works into their infrastructure to make the whole thing work, which they know better than, than we do. Um, but secondly, maybe more importantly, is in the Water Use and Development Plan, remember, it's, it's, uh, uh, development plans and water use, how are you gonna connect the two? So, um, and it's not in the, the present Water Use and Development Plan, but where is the, the growth directed? Is it gonna go south? Yeah? Um, and that's the vehicle as part of the Hawaii Water Plan, which integrates with the state, with the Water Resource Protection Plan, says this is how much is there. You have the State Water Projects Plan, which says this is how much the state's gonna use, you have an ag plan and so forth, and integrating all of these together is kinda the place to, to get at that. What I think staff would like to do is to, at some point, not now, because it's not there, but in the future, be able to approve, uh, well-construction permits based upon, hey, this is, you know, this, this isn't according to the Water Use and Development Plan. It, it is, you know, in that plan, and then go that route. We're not there yet, but that's one way of, of getting at it. So that's a, a second tool I think the county has.
Next stop, I'm glad...
Question?
And isn't the Water Use Development Plan being updated a, at this point? Do they have that?
Use much?
Yeah, I wonder, I, I think we heard the Water Use Development Plan is being updated, and their consulting review and the new revision is in early twenty fifteen?
Uh, yeah, that is correct, I'm not, uh, that familiar, all the details, I think it's more on the, the, the man's side, but, uh, certainly, I think that would be one thing that, through this, uh, petition anyway, to impress upon and to answer, and give some direction. Okay. Um, okay, so, um, as far as excessive waste, we didn't really find that, although high, it's excessive as far as per capita use based on the numbers they provided, which does have some integration of commercial, has some NELHA, um, you see in the operations down there. So, the numbers are high, but it is kinda skewed because of the big users, as opposed to the small guys. Uh, the serious disputes, um, I guess get into the conceptual model, which, with new information, it seems like it's kinda dovetailing towards, uh, something new. We're still waiting on the, the three-D model from the USGS, they're still, uh, working on that, and I think, as it's, uh, said in the submittal here, um, they're not looking to have that finished until the end of next year. So, um, the conceptual model, serious dispute is kinda still going on, though I think they're adjusting things because of what we're finding out. Um, the other is about the impacts through the, uh, nearshore biota and the traditional and customary practices. Um, from the findings, in a nutshell, what we're finding from local biologists, aquatic resources within the department, is that, um, the one, um, species that's been brought up in the petition that's at risk because of salinity is the, the damselfly. All the other native species, termite, eurahaline is something I learned, uh, but they, they can adapt to a wide range of salinities, which, um, occurs along the coast with the titles, tidal fluctuations and so forth, um, and they can adapt. And so it's the damselfly. But that's probably a good segue into the traditional and customary practice issue. Um, we don't see that there's this nexus with the damselfly and traditional and customary, um, practices, which is part of the pub, public trust, yeah. Question?
Yeah. I was wondering whether, uh, talking about, um, uh, species habitat related to cultural use, any work was done regarding the native Hawaiian yellow-faced honeybee? Which, um, are, I'm a beekeeper, so I'm a little bit more aware of bees, and, um, they're just about gone with the varroa mite. They're just about gone from every place in the state, and the only place I've ever seen them in quantity, uh, is at the Ankealine ponds down at the park. And I just, uh, was wondering whether you had seen any work related to that?
No, that's a, a new issue, I think, and no one's brought it up, um, it's certainly one that we could look into, uh, you know, continue to, in, extended investigation phase. Um, but so far, yeah, the only one is the, the damselfly, which, again, we don't see a nexus with the, the traditional and customary practices. Uh, the traditional and customary practices themselves, um, they do, obviously occur at the park, but we also know that, uh, one fish pond, the largest one, it's not allowed, they're not allowed to occur, it's, it's a protected wetland. So, that seems kinda contrary to, um, the issues that the park is raising, protect traditional and customary, however, it's not allowed in some parts of the, the park. So, if you wanna save traditional and customary, allow it to happen. There's also the issue of maintaining the ponds, which have occurred, as you saw at some other developments, where they've taken out the invasive, um, vegetation. But what many of these haven't been able to do is take out the invasive, um, uh, fish, yeah, that seem to be in, the, the major impact on things like the opaiula in the Ankealine ponds. And part of that's because, and what we've learned, is that, um, the, you know, the use of, uh, like, uh, rodanome, uh, pesticide, which could, doesn't affect the opaiula, but would get rid of, like, the mosquito fish. That would have far greater impact on helping to restore that issue, or the native species, as opposed to trying to control that by pumping wells. So, um, that's all I have to say on that, uh, in a nutshell. There's also legal arguments that have been made in the petition, but that'll be addressed separately, we're not gonna address that in the scientific side of things. So, that really, with the eight criteria summarized with the petition, um, staff is simply making the recommendation, as given earlier, about your three choices, and, uh, that's staff's presentation.